This meeting of Monroe Township Board of Education is now called to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Gorsky, ready for our roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Arminio.
Present.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Ms. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Cole Ponowitz.
Here.
Mr. Nostine.
Here.
Mrs. Carino.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April 8th, 2016, at all schools, to Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you very much. Let's move to the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the public Board of Education meeting, February 10th, 2016?
So moved.
Have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One abstention. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session meeting, February 10th, 2016?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Two abstentions? Any recusals? The motion carries though. Okay, we can move to student board members' report.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. The park tests started being implemented in all of the schools, including the elementary schools and the middle schools. The high school park testing started on Monday and will go through Tuesday of next week. Additionally, starting next Friday, there will be the DECA International Career Development Conference. Approximately eight students from the high school have qualified to go, and there will be students from over eight countries and all of the 50 states. Recently, between the previous board meeting and now, course selections have taken place where students have met with their guidance counselors in order to select courses for the upcoming school year. And the Junior Statesmen of America Club and the Do the Impossible Club, which were, if you will recall, was approved at the last board meeting, have since held their first meetings and are getting started up in preparation for the next school year.
Thank you, Mr. Board.
So this weekend, 50 of our high school students are going to be leaving for the YMCA's Youth in Government Program. It's a weekend-long conference, and students have prepared mock bills on topics they're passionate about, and some other students have completed assignments on other, like, other topics that aren't legislative, and they're going to debate on their issues or topics. And we have 50 of our students going to that. Last week, the high school had a college fair. All junior students went down during their second block, and sophomore students were given the option to go down during their lunch. The MTHS academic team went to the finals of the Bridgewater-Raritan Invitational Tournament, and they won second place and were awarded $1,000 for their victory. And finally, the Winter Color Guard placed first at a competition in Brick Memorial High School.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. That concludes our report.
Thank you both very much. Then can move to committee reports. Any committee chair wanting to report? Mr. Kaufman?
Curriculum committee met this evening, and we went over the new high school chemistry curriculum document, as well as the summer reading program. If the board would like, I could read into the record the 2016-2017 Course Study Inventory, 15 pages long, double-sided, going on. Are you sure?
I would like to have a look.
Are you sure I could, if you want?
We need a motion to extend the board meeting to two hours for that.
Okay, so I won't then.
I do.
And then the last thing we talked about was this new application that we're looking to bring in house Rubicon Atlas to help facilitate a more streamlined effort to do curriculum development with at the board. So it looks like it's going to be a good tool that our staff can use to help with curriculum writing. That's it. That's all I got.
Any questions for Mr. Kaufman? Any other committee chair? Mr. Mayall?
We had a personnel meeting yesterday. We have a recommended candidate for supervisor of special services on our agenda tonight. That is, Ms. Monica Hines is being recommended for this position. She is replacing Marie Pepe, who is retiring. Ms. Hines, Assistant Head of School, was a principal, assistant principal, and taught special ed for seven years. She has two master's degrees, excuse me, and she was chosen by a committee from an applicant pool of 50 candidates.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayall? Mr. Nostine?
Is that a new position, or is that fulfilling an existing position?
It's a, it's filling a retirement. At the end of June 30th, Ms. Marie Pepe was put in a number of years, and we're very sorry to see her retire and leave, but we wish her the best, but that is to fill her position.
Actually, I didn't, that was actually the wrong question. I meant, I knew she was filling her position. Will she be undertaking any additional job descriptions, or it's going to be the identical job description? I guess that was what I should have said.
Is the new candidate?
New candidate, yes.
No, the job description is pretty extensive as it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other committee chair? Ms. Arminio?
The Policy Committee was held on Thursday, April 7th. Again, it was open to the public. We had two public, two members of the public join us. It was an extensive committee meeting. It was a two-and-a-half-hour committee meeting, where in the past, they've been an hour. So we went through a lot of policies. Most were mandated by reg, and by regulation. Just let me go through a couple of them. There's public participation in board meetings. We're keeping some of the language, about a three-minute timeframe for people to come to the public forum and speak. Nothing has changed with the public forums. We still have three public forums, but each time a person comes up to speak, it'll be for three minutes. If after that time, and the, and the chair agrees, and someone needs to come up for a second time, it'll be another three minutes per forum. Okay? Recording board meetings. That will allow members of the public to record meetings with small devices, as long as they do not interfere with meetings, with the meeting. Prior permission is required for recording from an area other than the area designated for the public. Athletic competition requires cardiac screening as part of all sports, sports physical. And the next one is medical examination prior to participation on school-sponsored interscholastic or intramural team or squad. Accompanying the regulation is, I'm sorry, accompanying regulation to policy. So what we're doing was we're just making the policy and the regulation coincide. All these, again, all these policies are on the Monroe Township District website. Health Services, we have a defibrillator that will be requirement, and new administrative code have been added. Health Services, again, regulation to the policy. So we have a regula, we have a policy, which, as the attorney has explained to me, is the law. The regulation is the procedure to follow the law. So when you see a P before one of the letter, one of the numbers, that's the policy. When you see an R, it would be the regulation for instituting the policy requirements. Health and Physical Education merges physical education policy, one's on the agenda to be abolished, and health education policy. It includes new statutory requirements. We also have a policy that is, and most of these are mandatory. Administration of Medical Marijuana. We have a regulation also about medical, the administration of medical marijuana. High School Graduation. I would ask people to take note, there are some park recommendations. Actually, they're mandated recommendations on park as regulation for graduation requirements. I think if I can just ask the superintendent, council, I mean, council, President Ryback, just, it gets instituted in what year? May I?
Sure.
Mr. Ryback? Want me to elaborate on that?
Please.
Sure. So the graduation requirement, there are multiple assessments that students can take to meet the graduation requirement. The SAT, the ACT, the PSAT, Accuplacer, and park. And right now, there's multiple assessments. And this new policy gives updates on what the minimum score is to be considered proficient on each of those assessments. PSAT has its own way of scoring, and ACT, so the state had to take their scoring and adapt it to what's the minimum score that a school district will consider to be the minimum to pass so that they, a student can graduate with a degree. In the year 2021, as it stands right now, park is slated to be the required graduation requirement in the year 2021, barring, or, you know, barring any changes between now and then. So the policy does mention that, but it also, the biggest change I saw was giving the minimum score, scores that students need to pass all the assessments that are available.
And, and this policy comes as a mandate from the state? Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, it's mandated, because we have, students taking all these different assessments, and we have to have a policy in there that states what the minimum requirement is for them to graduate from our high school.
Next one is eligibility of residents and non-residents students. An update, including allowing a student to remain in school if the move is related to victim of domestic violence, sexual abuse, or family crisis. Reporting potentially missing or abused children. There's change in departments to report incidents. And outstanding food services charge, again, a change in reporting requirements. These are all available. This is the first reading of these this evening. There'll be a second reading in May, not on the 27th.
Or April 27.
Or, it could be on April 27?
That's when our next meeting is, so we could have the second reading then.
Okay. So that would be a second reading, and if there are any comments from the public that we could be emailed? Okay? That's my, that concludes.
Any question for Ms. Arminio? Okay, I think that ends our committee reports.
Excuse me, Mr. Board President. I'm sorry. I have a, I have a committee report.
I'm sorry, Mr. Arminio.
That's okay. The Finance Committee met on Monday, the day before yesterday, and we had some unfortunate news. The Summer Camp STEM Academy, which looked like a fantastic program, I would like to thank Dr. Alvik and all the teachers that participated in making this program try to come to fruition. It ends up that, after much effort, the, we had 300 slots available for the STEM program, summer program. We needed 216 students to basically say, it was a break-even point, we can, we can proceed with it. And unfortunately, as of that Monday, two days ago, we had 146 students registered. So they did put out another notice through the Monroe Letter and some other connects that we were going to attempt, but it doesn't appear that that's going to happen. We felt it was imperative that we let the parents know as soon as possible so they could make alternate plans for their, for their summer. The committee talked about alternatives, as far as maybe different ways of marketing it, but Dr. Alvik explained that it is a very competitive market. There's a lot of school districts that are currently employing this type of a program during the summer. Some have been in effect for quite some time. So this was a great program, and we're definitely hoping that we're going to attempt it maybe again next year, and maybe do a little more outreach just to the surrounding communities a little earlier. So, but again, thank, thank them for all their work for that. We also discussed the Woodland Roof Replacement Bid Award. It looks like there were six bidders. One came in, Integrity Roofing, came in as the, as the winner of the bid. The plan is that we're going to do a complete replacement and ripoff on the 1950 portion of the, of the Woodland Avenue School. And we did also find out that there was a study done with infrared to determine from the 1998 roof, the sections that were in need of repair. So they're going to be repaired as the unneeded. They'll rip off what was damaged and, and replace as needed. Third item that we, we discussed, we had a huge issue this month with the payroll. I'm sure, I'm hoping Mr. Gorsky will elaborate a little on all the efforts that his, himself, especially and his staff, had to go through to make sure that we did not miss a payroll. Our prior payroll service, PayServe, was sold, so it created quite a headache and a concern for the business administrator, who did a fantastic job to get us through this very, very scary situation of potentially missing a payroll. We did have to go to a different payroll provider, ADP, and the cost of that was, was more than PayServe, but it's a Cadillac service that we're getting now, and the Finance Committee agreed that one of the most important things that a school district does, next to, of course, the education of the students, is making sure that the employees are paid, all, you know, 1,100-plus of them. So we're going to go with ADP going forward. And on the good note also, on item number four, we had a budget update, and the budget was, was approved. The tentative budget was approved by the state, and the, the final budget will be voted on at the April 27th meeting. Mr. Board President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nostine. Any questions for the Finance Chair? Mr. Nostine, if you don't mind, I'd like to just make two comments on what you said. One is the STEM Summer Program. It's really a shame that enough people didn't sign up. Hopefully, they have till this Friday, I believe. It's, the program is just devised in a way that it's, it reinforces the science, technology, engineering, math. It's hands-on, it's interactive, and the cost is actually more attractive, I think, than any other program of its kind. So we hope, it's not too late that people send their registration in for their children. And also, if I might, Mr. Gorsky, I certainly would like to thank you for all your efforts in getting us out of that potential crisis that we could have actually not been able to make a payroll for 1,100 employees. And I think that, the credit to you, and certainly to Laura Allen as well, to, to help out in this, in this situation is, is well-deserved, and thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Sure.
While we're, while we're on the topic, it seems most relevant to discuss it now. I was going to update everybody during the Business Administrator's Report, but Tom gave a great introduction there. Our payroll service provider, who we've been with for 25 years by the name of PayServe, was recently sold, and a financial dispute arose between the buyer and the founder of the company and the seller. And that caused the founder of the company to rescind an offer of nine-month service to, to get the buyer up to speed on this very complicated payroll system. Monroe's school payroll system is extremely complex. It's the most complex I've ever seen because of all of the different tangents with PERS Pension, TPAF Pension, DCRP Pension, all with different rules and regulations. New Jersey, Pennsylvania, IRS requirements and different wage limits, Medicare, Social Security, garnishments, all the tax sheltered annuities, Chapter 78, S-125 medical, and I can go on and on. Especially, the Affordable Care Act has put a great burden on, on payroll. So unfortunately, our, my payroll department came upstairs on March 22nd, two days before the March 24th payroll, and said that we have a crisis. We just got a call from PayServe, and they said that we better go to the bank and make sure we have enough check stock in case we have to cut checks from gross to net by hand, manually, for 1,100 staff members. And I got on the phone with PayServe, and over the course of a few hours, I was able to use psychology to encourage the sole employee left after everybody had quit to run the program one more time for Monroe and give it another shot, and it worked. The net pay went out for everybody on 3/24, and then the system crashed. We received no reports. We received no amounts that had to be paid for taxes through the withholdings. We received no amounts for garnishments, the 403B amounts, and all those were withheld. So we had to immediately come up with a plan to find a successor. And once I had heard that the business was sold, I went to Paychecks, and I had an interview with Paychecks. They came to our office, and they said, due to the complexity, they're choosing not to bid on our, on our account at this time. Systems 3000 is another one that services a lot of school districts. It's a regional firm, and they said that due to the, the tax of the Affordable Care Act that's had on their firm, they're not taking any new business at this time either. So then this crisis hit, and I called ADP, and I negotiated a contract immediately with them on an, it's not an emergency contract. The contract doesn't have to be bid, even though it's over the bid threshold, because of the type of service, it's exempt from bidding, because it's so specific and unique. So ADP came in, they, I also was able to negotiate above a 35% discount over their first presented fee. So we have a suitor that will safeguard the payroll function here, which is really a most critical element of a very labor-intensive organization, will safeguard all of the employee data, which is just a treasure trove of sensitive information, including names and social security numbers and dependents, and bank accounts, and routing, and account numbers, birth dates, if I didn't say that. And will hold it in the most secure environment you can. They have separate locations all across the country in case one goes down to a national, a natural disaster, the other one's up and running. You couldn't find a better service. We got a fee that's competitive with Paychecks, their biggest competitor. They're like the Coke and Pepsi of payroll. And we had to then transition very quickly. ADP said, all right, our normal time to transition such an event is six months. I said I need it in three weeks. So my staff and I worked diligently and feverishly over, over spring break, and up until this morning. And one of the biggest hurdles that we had was providing year-to-date information to ADP, because otherwise, they'd be processing a payroll in the blind, not knowing year-to-date wages for all the employees. We had to back into that with a good 3/15 report, and manually add everybody's pay stub from 3/24. And unfortunately, that file had 41 corrupt pay stubs that were missing, that I had to then put into Excel and go gross to net for these 41 people, add all this information together. And I'll spare you the details, but it was a harrowing experience, to say the least. The thought of, of sending out an email to 1,100 staff members saying, I'm sorry, but we're not going to be able to fulfill our obligation to pay you this period, was, was just a remarkable feeling that I hope I never encounter again. These are people who are not the highest-paid individuals, for the most part. These are people who've paid a lot into medical and have automatic payments for college and cars and mortgages that would have been financially in turmoil if this event would have occurred. So this morning, when the all-clear came from ADP and no errors on the 4/15 payroll and all systems were go, it was a wonderful feeling of relief. And I would sincerely like to thank yourself, Mr. Ryback, and Mr. Nostine, his Finance Chair, and Dr. Kozak for the support during this period, because this really could have been a crisis of grand proportion that was averted. And although, as Mr. Nostine said, the, the contract is greater than what we had before, that was a 25-year contract, and the fee was never inflated, and, and what we're getting now is really a market-rate service for something that's the highest quality. So I would like to also thank Laura Allen, because she was instrumental in this whole endeavor, and the payroll department. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate what you did, Michael. Okay, we can move now to the first public forum. This is to address items on the agenda. If anyone from the public is interested in coming to the microphone, we ask you to state your name and your address, and please note that you'll have three minutes to address your question. I ask that you speak to me, not individual members of the board, as they cannot respond to you. That being said, is anyone from the public interested in coming up to this first public Seeing no one, we can move on. Mr. Superintendent, to your report.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. President. I just wanted, before I begin my report, just to thank our student representatives once again. I look forward to their report every month, and I'm aware of the achievements that they had mentioned tonight, but I just hope that the members of the audience, both the members that are sitting here and the members who maybe are watching at home, recognize how well our students are doing, and especially in some of our academic clubs, the advances that they've made, the, the achievements, the recognition that they're receiving statewide. It's really something to be, to be proud of. And as always, both of you reported in a very eloquent manner, and both very well-spoken. So just wanted to recognize you for that, and thank you for those reports. There are some activities that I wanted to mention as well, that our students involved in, are involved in. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to go see our girls' lacrosse team and our boys' lacrosse team. And our boys' lacrosse team, of course, when I got to the game, were doing very well. It's a very strong team, and they won the game, I believe it was 10-3 was the final score, maybe 10-4. Our girls' lacrosse, when I got there during the first half, was, I think it was 9-3, they were losing. They ended up winning in overtime, and I believe it was 11-10 was the final score. So a little shout-out, if you will, to our girls' lacrosse for, you know, really coming back. And not to take anything away from the boys, they did well also, but our girls really came back in that second half, and of course, to our coach, who made some coaching moves there, and, you know, really says something about the, the kids and our coaching staff. Of course, I don't want to not mention, or if you ever miss, if I did not mention, baseball, softball, track, golf, tennis, all of our teams. And if I missed any, please, I want to make sure I include everybody. They're doing well. Kids are doing well. So it's nice to see that, that the students are doing well academically, both in classes and their academic clubs, and of course, in the extracurricular sports activities as well. I just wanted to mention that April is Autism Awareness Month, and there's a lot of activities taking place in our schools. The light, referred to as Light it up blue in recognition of that, and raising awareness and, and much-needed finances for research in that area. We have a strategic plan that was developed, it's a five-year plan, and at the August 27th board meeting, there will be an update on that plan. I'm sorry?
April, what, April?
Did I say?
Is that August?
August. Oh, my apologies. Thank you, Mr. President. April 27th. Must be the spring weather. I'm thinking warm weather. My apologies on that. I would like to note to the board that on the agenda, our 2015-16 school calendar, the calendar for this year, because we did not use all of our built-in inclement weather days, that there will be two additional days that students will have off from school. I believe the days are, I believe they're May 27th and the 31st, the Friday before Memorial Day Weekend, and the Tuesday immediately after Memorial Day Weekend. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report. We move to the personnel.
Personnel? Okay, can I get a motion to approve items A through Y on the personnel? So moved. Second, anyone?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes to all recus on Y.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Cole Ponowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. We can move to board action. It's on page 11. Can I get a motion to approve board action items A through M?
So moved.
Yes, Mr. Mal.
I have some reservations about policy 5460, section C, the graduation requirements. I'd like to make a motion to remove that policy and discuss separately.
Okay, well.
I'll second that.
Okay, could, any discussion? I have some questions on it about the...
We just have to vote to remove it, right, first, before we discuss that?
Well, there's a motion to remove it, so we have a discussion on the motion.
Oh, on the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Was, I guess your objection was related to what we said before, what was raised before?
Well, my problem with the policy, that specific, just section C, is that these new requirements did not follow the proper regulations to become graduation requirements. In order to become a graduation requirement, the New Jersey DOE has to follow the New Jersey Administrative Procedure Act, which outlines how changes to the law must be followed. It includes...
The point of order, I think we have to vote first on the motion to remove it from the whole, there's a motion on to vote for all of the, of a list of things.
It was never seconded.
Ms. DeMayo.
I did.
Yeah, it was seconded. We have to just, we're not discussing the policy at this, it was just a vote, a motion to remove it from the other vote.
And I believe you're correct.
Yeah.
She is, yes. I didn't know it was seconded. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did.
It was seconded.
Yes, she's correct.
So there's no discussion on the policy, per se. There's a discussion on whether we want to remove it or not from the vote.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct. Motion to change the order.
Right.
Okay, so I guess we can take a vote on that.
Okay. The motion on the floor is Ms. DeMayo, seconded by Mrs. Kolpanowicz, to remove policy 5460 from the consent roll call and address it separately. Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Yes.
Mr. Nosteen.
Yes.
Mrs. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes. Then I believe we will have a roll call then on the rest of the board action items, with the exception of 5460.
Is there any discussion on any of those items?
You know what, I will discuss, sorry, Mr. President?
Yeah.
I just want to discuss policy 168. I'm going to be voting no on that and I just want to explain, despite the fact that I was the chair of the policy committee, we had a rigorous and very good discussion about the recording of board meetings and everybody else was in full agreement, but I just think that, I was, I believe that it should be audiotaped, the closed-session recording, and then we follow procedure for the Open Public Records Act and the Open Public Meetings Act. I know it is not something that our board attorney would recommend, but just on a personal level, not as a chair of that committee. So that's, I just wanted to make that statement. If somebody else wanted to have that discussion before the vote, that's fine. Nope.
Anything else?
I guess we can, there's no further discussion?
We can vote. We're voting on board action items A through M, with the exception of policy 5460. Ms. Arminio.
Yes on everything except policy 168, recording of board meetings.
And that's a no, right, ma'am?
That's correct.
168 is a no. Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Yes.
Mr. Nosteen.
Yes.
Mrs. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes and that leads us to 5460.
Okay. So the problem I have with section C is that these new requirements did not follow proper regulations to become graduation requirements. In order to change the regulations for the New Jersey DOE and many other parts of the state, they must follow the New Jersey Administrative Procedure Act, which outlines how changes to the law must be followed. First, the New Jersey DOE must publish in the New Jersey Register the new rules and allow for public comment. There was, none of this was followed and this allows for transparent government and the New Jersey DOE blatantly disregarded the law when setting forth these changes to graduation requirement. As a result, there are children at risk for not graduating. And I have the rules, if anybody's interested. Currently, the Education Law Center has brought a lawsuit against the New Jersey DOE challenging these requirements. I feel it's premature to adopt them as a policy, especially since the New Jersey DOE has not proper followed, followed the proper law in getting these to become graduation requirements.
Can you, can you discuss it? I have something.
Yes.
I'd like to say. Well, I appreciate what you're saying. I'm having a problem in saying, in determining what's legal, what's not legal. I think that's up to the courts, certainly up to legislation. We here, as a board, we have to follow what the State Department mandates to us and follow the law. It has not been determined that anything has been illegal. That's all, that's where, you know, where I'm coming from. And I think that until and unless that happens, it's incumbent upon us to support the law. And that's really all I have to say about that. I mean, we are mandated to give the park exam and in 2021, unless it changes, that will be the case. If it changes, if that holds true, then we will change the policy. But until that, I think we have to, as a Board of Education, follow the law, which right now is saying that the park will be mandatory for graduation as of 2021.
But that doesn't mean we have to adopt it as a policy. I mean, we can not adopt it as a policy, still follow the law, and basically it says to the New Jersey DOE, "We do not, we want you to follow the law and we want a public comment on this," which has not happened.
I think you could say that anyway, Mr. Mal, but I think that what we vote on here is following the law. I think anything less than that would be, I think, detrimental to us as a Board of Education. I don't want to take that, that...
They're not following the law.
That's not up to us to determine. That's what we have to remember. That's not our choice. That's not our decision. Ms. Arminio.
Yeah, I'm just, just in general, not necessarily in particular to this policy, but if, you know, governments are made of, just like us, you know, people and humans and sometimes we, sometimes error or procedure has not been properly followed, and if that is the case, and I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong, I'm saying I'm not aware whether it's the case or not. If it is, however, the case that some procedures from the Department of Education were not followed properly and the public, again, was not given proper notification and proper time for a hearing, I would be opposed to accepting the mandate because if it wasn't done properly, I mean, you know, I expect my government, just like I expect the board, to follow proper procedures. If everything was followed properly, I may still not like it, but I would understand our mandate to follow through with it. So I'm just saying that if it is the case that government entities are not following their own rules, which I know to be the case in many avenues of government, then I would also, I would be opposed to it on that level, at the very least.
Anyone?
I know it's, I'm not part of the board, but...
Well, you are technically.
Could you just make a comment? My concern with not adopting the policy is not to comment on park one way or the other, but a big part of the policy is the, is the minimum score on all the assessments. So I'm raising kind of a rhetorical question. If we don't adopt the policy and we have high school students that graduate and it's not part of the policy, what that cut score is? Technically, it's a state setting the cut score, the minimum score, but it's also part of our policy. Would then our students be officially graduating from our high school without an official policy stating what they need to pass, what, you know, like the minimum score they need to pass, let's say on the PSAT or the SAT or another assessment?
Question? Mr. Kaufman.
What's the driver, can you hear me?
As long as everybody else can hear you.
What's the driver for doing it now for something that's going to impact us in 2021? Is there something that is affecting us for this graduation year?
Yes.
In the policy?
That's, well, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah.
The, right now, currently and for the next couple of years, students can take a multitude of different assessments to demonstrate their proficiency in order to graduate, ACT, PSAT, all those type of assessments. This policy outlines the minimum score they need to achieve in order to consider that they pass that assessment. So that's my concern. That's the immediacy of this policy to me. And I'm not commenting on whether the government followed the right procedures or not for park. I'm looking at it just for our high school seniors, you know, who will be graduating this year, that we have something in place that states, "Here's what you need to, you know, achieve" on whatever assessment they took.
So what we're doing now, what, this vote is going to impact graduating seniors of this year?
Well, I feel like it could.
How is that be possible?
I feel like it could. And that's why I said it's somewhat of a rhetorical question because I don't have the answer to it. The state sets the minimum score, but each district maintains its own policies, which basically determine, for instance, each school district determines how many credits are needed for a high school student to graduate. The minimum is 120 by the state. Our number is 130. So although it was a minimum set by the state, we have, as a district, established that we desire 130 credits. Technically, the state has said, "Here's what the minimum score is that you need for each one of these assessments." And that's outlined in the policy. It's a separate score for each assessment. If we don't approve this policy, I don't know what the answer is. Technically, the state sets the scores, but we don't have a policy in place that states unequivocally, yes, the student graduated because he or she passed that score. So that's my concern. And I, again, I don't have, I would need a lawyer well-versed in that area to advise me, but that's my fear of by not having this policy approved.
Ms. Arminio.
So two things that come to mind right now is that the policy that we're talking about, 5460, high school graduation, not only stipulates things about park, which we all know is a controversial issue, but it has other elements in it...
Yes.
...that do not have to do with park that are necessary as requirements for graduation.
Absolutely.
So this is not about, is not all, there are elements in this policy that impact the park situation, but it is not in its entirety only about parks. So my second thought was that there are unintended consequences if we don't have a set policy.
Yes.
Okay.
Potentially unintended consequences.
Potentially unintended consequences. Okay.
President?
And since, excuse me, and since this is the first reading, there can be a further discussion about this on, with board members. Okay.
Mr. Austin.
To Ms. Arminio's point, are we changing the requirements for, for example, SAT reading and ACT and Accuplacer? Or are those the existing thresholds that are already in place?
Well, the state set those thresholds and this is our policy to demonstrate, to show that.
But obviously, the only addition here would be the park, correct?
No. Prior to this...
Well, Ms. Mal, I'm going to ask you, please, give comments to me. I don't want to have debate going across this way.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Nosteen, could you...
That's fine. So with regards to the thresholds, which ones are new? I don't see like a little line next to the changes. Obviously, park is new. It's the first time we've seen the threshold for that, correct?
They're all new as of this year because the state came out with the minimum scores of what was needed to graduate.
So they never had minimum scores before?
Well, they never, all these other assessments were never offered until, was it last year that we offered?
Once they, once they took away HESPA. HESPA was the old graduation requirement. Once they took away HESPA, the state came up with this list of alternate requirements.
So basically, we need to know this, so obviously, if they needed to go through a portfolio, like an alternate way, we would know when to say, "Hey, you need to go through a portfolio," is basically what we're saying here. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we, right now, if we don't do this, we wouldn't know when to say, "You need to go through a portfolio for an alternate way to graduate," correct? Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman, and then I think, Mr. Mal, did you want to say something? First, Mr. Kaufman first, I'm sorry.
So I guess fundamentally, forgetting about what the changes are, fundamentally, I have an issue with, if we don't do anything, whatever the policy is today, carries us through through the end of this year. Because if you don't make a change, the current policy carries it. My question to you guys is, if we make a change to the policy two months before graduation and it negatively impacts one student because we now have a new standard that wasn't in play, what do we do?
Can I answer?
Yeah, please.
This information was shared with us at the beginning of the school year. We used this information from the state to guide our current seniors. So we know for a fact that our current seniors either met one of those requirements or has gone through the portfolio assessment.
Okay, so we're good?
We are good for our current seniors.
Okay.
Mr. Mal, did you want to say something?
No, I was just referring to the HESPA.
Kolpanowicz.
It was all new.
When the park first came out, I didn't, maybe because I didn't understand, I didn't think it would affect the class of 2016. I could support this policy, taking out the piece about, part C, the park assessment, and holding it off till next year. Because I do not think you should ever change a policy in the middle of a year to affect that year. I think any change in a policy should affect the following year. So I could not support this policy the way it is right now for the class of 2016. I mean, with the changes. So the changes in the policy and with the inclusion of park, I can't support for the class of 2016.
Can I?
Yes, Dr. Alvin.
If that's the case, then we may have some students that did not meet one of the requirements because some students are using that park assessment from 11th grade as their graduation requirement for this year. I would have to go back and look at the list. I don't know how many students that would, that would, we have an Excel sheet for every senior and we've listed every single assessment and we've tracked it throughout the year. The guidance counselors, Dr. Cretelli, myself, have looked at it throughout the year to make sure that all of our students are meeting one of those requirements. So I don't know if it would affect any of our seniors if we took park out as one of the possible graduation assessments.
So if we leave it with the park, we're guaranteeing that everybody will graduate this year?
Yes.
And if we take it out, we're not guaranteeing that everybody will graduate this year?
I could not guarantee that this evening. I would have to go back and look back at that spreadsheet and see if any students, if that's the only assessment that some of our students may have passed. I don't know the answer to that.
Mr. Austin.
So just help me understand, the prior policy, we just had threshold level for HESPA. Is that accurate?
The current policy.
The current policy.
Yeah. No, I'm checking the current policy right now. I was doing that and checking it. We do have some, we do have thresholds on there. And that's what I'm just, I don't have it checked word for word, but there are thresholds on there. Threshold scores.
But for which tests? Because obviously, we were just concerned with HESPA at the time, correct?
SAT, ACT, and others.
Okay. So the only, so are those thresholds the same?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and check. If I could, Mr. President, suggest that it is a first reading and the policy committee will most likely meet, well, I don't know about before April 27th, but we could put this second reading off until May and this policy could be looked at, so.
Do we need a motion to do that, to do that, or you still want to vote on this?
I am, but it would take me time. I mean, that's why we have two readings.
Okay.
Yes.
The motion that introduced board action items A through M made by Mr. Nosteen, seconded by Ms. DeMayo, still applies to... by Mr. Mayo, still applies to this. The order was only changed. So, we already have a motion in a second. We just need a roll call.
Specifically on five, four, six, zero, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the plan is to, to take a roll call on this and then do the second reading in May?
After the policy committee.
After the policy committee. Okay.
Can we add that to the motion? That the policy committee will look at this before again?
I have no problem with that. I don't know.
I, I didn't hear a motion to table. A motion to table would take this off for the vote tonight and defer it to the next meeting.
Or it can, if I could.
Yeah, sure.
Or it could stay on there because it's still voted on in the second reading, and the changes could be looked into. And if the changes were amenable to everyone at the second reading, then you could either vote or not vote. There could be changes made to the policy based on the feedback that we received tonight. If the changes are legal, we'd have to follow that.
Yeah, and my point is just to make sure that it does go back to the policy committee again before we vote on it at the, whatever meeting it's going to come up at. So, I don't know if you need that as part of the motion, or it, we will just.
I think we can have an, I mean, I, I would, I would be amenable to putting it on policy for, for the next meeting. If that's all that, if, if we need a formal vote.
What I think I'd like to do is, I guess, what would settle is if, is if I direct Ms. Arminio to, to do this.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, for the May meeting.
I think it's important.
Second reading. Okay.
Now we have a vote on.
Fifty-four, sixty. Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
No.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
No.
Mrs. Kole Panowitz.
No.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mrs. Carino. No, thank you. Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo. Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes for fifty-four, sixty adoption.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we now ready for Business Administrator's report. Mike, right back to you.
Mr. Board President, members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that, pardon, I lost my space after all that exchange. It's recommended that Board action items A through H be approved by consent roll call.
So, moves.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Kole Panowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mrs. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske.
Okay, so I have a list for you. So, I abstain with the exceptions of items B, C, E, G, and H.
B, C, E, G, and H, which is a yes.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Board President, motion passes, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. We're ready for the Board President's report. On a lighter note, on March 24th, Mrs. Kole Panowitz and I had the pleasure of attending the Third Annual Falcon Pals Event. Ms. Kathleen Dillon is the coordinator of Health and PE, and, and certainly is doing a fabulous job. This program is an elective for seniors, and what they do is, they work together with special needs students in a very non-threatening kind of environment. In this particular case, I think they were doing yoga. And the camaraderie, camaraderie that we see was really something very special, and the support from the parents was very special. And it was a, a well-attended evening and a fun evening, and it's a, seems to be a very worthwhile program. So, congratulations, Ms. Dillon and all her students. One other item I just want to mention is something that was in today's Star Ledger on the front, front page, and it had to do with our state aid and the area of Hold Harmless. We have been, as I mentioned before, meeting with our elected officials, and we had a meeting with Senator Sweeney. The idea of this Hold Harmless came up, and, and where it's coming from is we have different areas other than Monroe that their wealth factor has been increasing, their student population has been decreasing, and yet they're getting the same amount of state aid as they've had in, in the past, and we're still getting nothing. Now, we're not the only one like that, but Senator Sweeney has recognized this and is working very hard to make some changes so that we could perhaps see some more money. I know the, the report today also mentions that the idea has the support of Senator Sarlo as well, and I believe Commissioner Hesby. So, we're looking forward to that. And again, I also want to, and I mentioned this before, I'd like to thank our mayor, Mayor Tamboro, for reaching out to Senator Sweeney and giving us the opportunity to meet with him. Thank you. That ends my report. Do we have any other Board of Education business?
I have something.
Yes.
Actually, to exactly what you said, because last week, I went to the Senate Budget and Appropriation Committee in Trenton, where the Office of Legislative Services reviews the governor's proposed budget. And this week, I went, I couldn't make it, so I listened to Commissioner Hesby present to the Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee about education. And in both meetings, Senator Beck talked about that bill. And she's, it's a bipartisan bill, and she's working on it with Sweeney. So, I got very interested in the bill. It hasn't, doesn't have a number yet. It hasn't been finalized. So, I reached out to Senator Greenstein, and I talked to her about it, and she told me that she has been talking to Senator Beck about it and voicing her concerns about Monroe. And she's, I asked her, you know, as soon as the bill gets a number and is available to the public, can she send it to us so that we can take a look at it and actually sit down with Mike and Mary and determine how it impacts Monroe? So, she's going to do that for us.
It's, it's nice to that we're finally getting to first base over here. It's been quite a few years, and it's been quite an effort, but I think we're finally seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. But I guess the key word here is show us the money.
Yeah.
Because that's what it's all about. Any, yes?
If I may just add to that, add to the optimism with the, with this bill, in our meeting with Senator Sweeney, we were told that this could affect the very next budget year for 1718, and could lead to increases in state aid that are, are amortized for districts, but could be a significant increase even as, as early as next year. So, we look forward to that.
So, I guess the key thing to say is let's keep those cards and letters going out to our elected officials, everyone. It's, it's important. Any other, for other Board business? Of course, I do have something on the other Board business I'd like to bring up. It's come to my attention, you know, we've switched to all digital here on computers for communications, and that's been very good as far as committee reports. But when it comes to the agendas, I know some of us have been printing them out, and then there's changes, and there's more printing out, and it's a lot of paper and a lot of ink and on our little, on our little printers. So, I want to throw that out there as far as a matter of discussion, difficulty, level of difficulty in, in dealing with the paperwork and, and communications, if anybody's been experiencing anything like that. Uh-oh. Yes, I, if any Board member would like to comment, I'd appreciate that.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, I've been finding it difficult using, not necessarily the Google Docs, but not having a delivery of the paper because I keep reprinting and reprinting. And it would be nice just to have the agenda and the meeting minutes in hard copy.
Yes, Ms. Kole Panowitz.
Yeah, and I've always done the same thing. I've always made a copy of the agenda at home and brought it with me because I like to take notes, and I like to do it on a hard copy instead of correlating a, you know, computer with a pad and everything. So, I don't have a problem with any of the backups or the Googles or committee reports.
Yes.
But I would, I personally would prefer a hard copy of the agenda, but I would continue to make my own if, if that wasn't impossible, wasn't possible.
Anybody else? Mr. Nostine.
I, I love it the way it is, and I congratulate us for moving this way. The only thing is, why don't we just give people the option? Like I said, I would, I prefer not to, but obviously, some people do, so what the heck?
Other idea?
I, I had mentioned to Superintendent that I just think that I'm learning, I'm still learning Google Docs, but things are buried in there, and I don't have, I feel that I, I'd like to have everything available, and I know it's available there, but if I can't find it, it doesn't matter. So, you know, I have also printed out my own materials to do the same thing. I keep records and notes, and then I have that record. If, if we look only at Google Docs, which is fine, and I'm happy to learn new things, but then I, and I lose any record of anything that I've either commented, or especially with, with policies and, and the like. So, there is some advantage, although I'm a tree hugger, I would like to, you know, I, I'm, I'm ambivalent about printing everything, but I just want to have access to all the information before board meeting. One of the reasons why I abstain from the minute, meeting minutes is because I couldn't find them on Google Docs. I'm not going to vote on anything that I can't review. So, there's, there's maybe a learning curve that still has to happen, but I'd like to, I'd like to have the information. You know, I think it's important before I vote.
Sure. First of all, just my own personal feelings that as Board members, you're volunteering your time, it's an unpaid position, you all are very busy with everything going on in your life, and the last thing that I want to do is cause you more stress or, or anything else related to that. At the same time, so I want to meet you at your comfort level. If that means printing out an agenda, I'll certainly print it out for you. The, the issue that I would like to bring out, and possibly a compromise, would be this. As you fully are aware, this is a, you know, a sizable district with a lot of things going on and a lot of moving parts. We try to gather as many items as we can by the Friday before the board meeting so that we send you the most updated agenda. However, things do occur after that Friday, between Friday and Wednesday. So, to, when we add things to the agenda, we have a couple of different ways that we could handle that. We could send you a hard copy Friday with the agenda, and I don't know whether you want all the backup material because that's considerable, or if you would feel comfortable enough with going to Google Drive to see the backup material. I'm seeing heads nodding. I'm going to take that as at least affirmative in some areas. But the, when it comes time to Wednesday, now we have a couple, we try not to, but many times, we have a couple additions to the agenda. They're not all on one page. They may be throughout the agenda. So, I'm imagining, and based on experience with other boards, that you, you pull out your agenda on a Sunday morning, you have a cup of coffee, you're writing your notes down on all the agenda. Okay. Now you get here Wednesday, we walk in, we say, hey, we got the revised agenda for you. Yeah, but I have all my notes on this one. So, now you have two agendas, and you're looking back and forth. So, a possible, possible compromise might be this. We give you the hard copy on Friday. Any additions are, that are made, we put up a monitor, a screen between each Board member so that you both can see it, and that will have the updated agenda, and we will scroll through, so you don't have to do anything. It's just there. There won't be, there won't be a keyboard, it'll just be a screen. We'll have it daisy chained together so that we're operating from up here. Dr. Albig has kindly agreed to be command central. And any links that go on the agenda, we, she could easily click, and you would see it on your screen, but you would still have your hard copy to copy notes down. And any updates, if there was an, you know, added number or letter in, or number two or whatever on the agenda, we could point it out to you, and if you didn't have the hard copy version, you could look at your screen for that. So, you don't have to answer tonight, but I just thought that might be a nice compromise to keeping things as digital as possible while still giving you the, the comfort of having something to keep your notes on.
So, why don't we do this? Why don't we think about it, and then maybe you can get back to me, call me, email me something, and then I'll be speaking to Dr. Kozak on that.
And in the meantime, if you would, Mr. Board President, I'm sorry, if you would, if you want the hard copy, and I have a good idea of who those members are that want the hard copy, please let us know. I'd be more than happy before the 27th to make sure that you get a hard copy delivered to your door for that, okay?
Thank you. Okay. I think we can move to our second public forum. Now, this is not necessarily pertaining to the agenda. If anyone from the public would like to come up and make a comment, I'd ask you to step up to the microphone, state your name, address, and be limited to three minutes.
Mark Klein, Seven Crenshaw. What you just brought up about Senator Sarlo and Senator Sweeney, you're going to try to listen to you and help you, you got a better chance of selling the Brooklyn Bridge. I was at that Budget and Appropriations hearing as a resident, and I saw firsthand the disrespect shown to our Superintendent, Dr. Hamilton, and to our Business Administrator, Mike Gorski. I saw, you, you mentioned Jennifer Beck. Before she heard anything, she voted against us. Okay? The only one that was for us and paid attention was Senator Panaccio. I saw total disrespect by Sweeney to other people sitting on that committee, because they were probably Republicans. They're full of baloney. And later on, when I can, well, I don't know, can I speak about something else now? Or do I have to wait until later? Okay. So, that's the story there, okay? I've always brought up about the state constitution, about free public education, and I spoke to Tom, and Tom said, well, what really is free public education? We pay for it. And I, I thought about it, and at first, he was right, but he's wrong. The money that comes from the state is income tax, lottery money, everything other than property taxes, and then some property taxes also. So, in reality, free public education paid for by the state isn't only paid by us in property taxes. Unfortunately, we are paying it here in Monroe. Was that me?
You got another minute.
Only another minute? Oh, give me a break. Can I come back a second time if I can't finish, to finish this?
Yeah. Why don't you try finishing?
As we already know, that the money that's in the state education fund, 60 to 65% are going to 31 school districts. You brought up about the Newark Education Law Center. They're the ones that brought up something like 14 Abbott decisions to the State Supreme Court. So, if they are going against this graduation standards that the state set, I'm sure it's not going to benefit our school district. Okay? So, that was the part that I wanted to say about the, the free public education. Then I said fair share. We're entitled to our fair share. And, and Tom again said, well, what would you classify fair share? And it was the same thing I always said is, other districts that are rated the same way we are should be getting the same. He's absolutely right. There are other circumstances involved. But something that I said when I was on the board, and the Senator from Warren came out with it three years later or four years later, I said that every child in this state is worth.
Just ask you to, to finish up because your time is up.
Can you just let me go a little further to finish this, please?
Give you another few seconds.
I need more than two seconds. But anyway.
That's all you got.
Every child in this state is worth the same, whether they're from Trenton, Princeton, Newark, East Brunswick, Perth Amboy, North Brunswick, and Monroe. They're all worth the same. The state is telling us that the students in Monroe Township are not worth the same as the students in Perth Amboy, Newark, or Trenton.
I have to stop you there. I thought we were just going to take a few more seconds.
No, it's just going to be a few more seconds.
Now, Mr. Klein, we don't have any more time. We're really out of time. It wouldn't be fair to anybody else that wants to.
Okay, then when you open up again, I can come up again.
No, I don't think so. Oh, wait, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we changed that. Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
For the third public forum?
For the third public forum? For the third?
No, no. Is anybody else? Yes.
Can you hear me? Push it down.
There you go.
My name is Donna Minioni, I'm a substitute teacher in the district.
My name's Usha Singh, I'm a substitute teacher also, certified. The question we have is, we'd like to know why substitute teachers are no longer allowed to work a five-day week in the district? We're only limited to a four-day work week?
I wasn't aware of a regulation or a policy limiting that. I mean, we have substitutes that do work more that are full-time, so.
The substitutes that I know, even if they have a long-term position, are working four days a week, and then the extra day that's available, another sub comes in to fill in.
I was mentioning to Dr. Kozak, I wasn't aware of any in-house procedure limiting the time that a substitute could work. We don't have any policies to that effect. We do try to go through a rotation for substitutes, and we have a very vast substitute list. Maybe that could be the reason to sharing the hours, but-
But let me clarify, though, if I could, Mr. President. Long-term subs, when you say long-term subs, if they're going to be in for an extended period of time, we do put them under contract, and they do work every day.
Okay, I know of some substitutes that work for teachers, perhaps maybe on an extended sick leave, they're only, they might not be certified teachers at this point, they're still considered substitute teachers, they're working a four-day work week, and then someone else will come in for that fifth day. I've been substituting in the district for 15 years, this has just been implemented in the past two. No explanation was given. To be quite honest with you, we thought it was because of Obamacare, that federal mandate that you cannot have an employee working 30 hours a week or more without offering benefits. However, neighboring districts, East Brunswick, North Brunswick, South Brunswick, have substitutes working five days a week. So now I'm starting to think this is not a federal mandate that, you know, law across the land.
Well, then I would say for the healthcare law, and I would defer to Mr. Gorski, that there is a minimum or a number of 30 hours that if they work that, so you're right about that. And as far as what East Brunswick does, no, I'm not 100% sure what they're doing, but-
Right, but if it's a, you know, federal law across the land, it should be implemented across the land. Other schools shouldn't be able to have substitute teachers working five days a week unless they are offering them health benefits, and they're not.
Dr. Kozak?
I can't speak for East Brunswick.
There is an Affordable Care Act requirement-
Right.
-that requires the district providing health insurance-
Right.
...when a part-time worker exceeds a number of hours. That's certainly one issue, and that's the law. But there is no Monroe policy limiting substitute hours to skirt or circumvent that law. It's just not in place.
So how do we get around being blocked on AESOP when, once we already have our four days filled, the teacher cannot request us? We're done for that week. I don't know who it benefits, because here's a situation, I mean, it doesn't benefit the teacher nor the students, because, for example, I worked three days this week for one teacher. She wanted me there for another day. I couldn't accept that other day because I already had the fifth day, I'm working on Friday. So I worked for one teacher Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, can't work tomorrow because I have a day filled in for Friday. So now another substitute teacher comes in for one day. No continuity. Different, it's difficult, even when you have a teacher that's requesting a specific sub, I'd like the sub to be there for me for this one week. She knows my student, she knows my plan, it's not happening.
Let me say, first of all, let me thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think at this point, I have to ask our administration to look into this, because I think we're unaware of everything that you're aware of, and we need to find out and get to the bottom of it. So thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else from the public, other than Mr. Klein? Mr. Floyd?
Good evening, Doug Boyford, Road. And I told Mark, I said, "I want to get up there and speak before you jump back up." But I'm afraid, at least what I'm reading in the newspaper, I'm not as optimistic about Monroe's future based on the Sweeney-Beck bill, the possible bill that may come about. Because ever since I heard of this, I've been following it very, very closely in the newspaper and reading everything that I could get my hands on regarding that, and from my understanding is that, yes, they are, they are looking at reducing state aid that they are giving to districts that have been losing students, but the, the extra aid that will go to other districts are only for those districts who are spending under adequacy. And this district has always been an over-adequacy budget district. So I am not at all optimistic that Monroe will benefit from this, and I just want to raise that. I'm not, I'm not the kind of person that likes to be pessimistic, but based on everything I've read in the newspaper, I do not think we are going to benefit from this change. As I presently read in reports that appear in the Star Ledger, that's basically been my, my resource on that. So I just want to caution the public, as well as members of the Board, I don't think the picture is as rosy as it was being painted tonight by some of the comments that I was hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Let me just say that you know that we've been very diligent on this, and we're watching it very closely and communicating with all legislators. At this point, I think, you know, we've been optimistic, but as I said a few moments ago, "Show us the money," and that's, that's where our attitude is, so it's a wait-and-see thing. We're not legislators, we only hope that they come across for us. Anyone else in the public? Mr. Klein?
Mark Klein, Seven Crenshaw. Let me know when I have 15 seconds left, please. These comments are not against you or the Board. It's just that we've seen what transpired in person with the losers in Trenton, and they are losers. What I, when we talk about fair share, we always said fair share was based on the way a district is socio-economically versus others. And in reality, that's wrong. You know what fair share is? Fair share is that every student, every child in this state is worth the same, and I'm not going to go through the towns again, okay? And what I said when I was on the board is, let's just take a figure of $6,500, and fair share is that every student in every district, I should say, every district will receive $6,500 in state aid per student. And then, based on the amount of special ed students you have, you receive extra funds. Special circumstances, we're talking about breakfast and dinner and all this other crap, those schools would get more money. But at least you're starting fair. You're on the same level for the base funds. But when you have school districts, and we're talking about Trenton, Newark, Perth Amboy, that is spending anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000 a student, most of it, if not all of it, is state aid. They get all their schools built totally for free. And we had that discussion about New Brunswick High School, $187 million paid for by the state. We had a fight to get $15 million that was promised to us. Is that fair? No, it's not. So to me, a fair share, and the senator from Warren came out a few years later, and he came out with a flat amount of like $7,200, period. What I'm saying is, come up with a figure, and then allow the districts that have a larger percentage of special ed, extra money. Then you have fair funding. So the baloney about fair share compared to other districts, that's a bunch of baloney. Because if that was the case, Old Bridge, when I was on the board, was getting $4,700 per student. We were getting $400 per student, okay? I'm finished with that. Now, one thing I do want to bring up-
30 seconds.
30 seconds, good. I received an email from a journalist in Westchester last week wanting me to comment on what transpired at this meeting between Dr. Hamilton and myself. I refuse to do that. I'm letting the Board know. I did not answer. She left the phone number, I'm just letting it die. He's away, he's doing well, I'm doing well, it's over. The last thing that I want to say, and this you have to give me time for, is I want to compliment all of you for the budget. It's the first time that I'm totally comfortable with what you people have done for the new budget. I finally have confidence in that you did your best to make the increase as minimal as you could. And again, I thank you, my neighbors thank you, who else can I thank? Everybody in the township thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Anybody listening, that's fact.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anyone, we'll move to the closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go with a closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 1046 through 10421, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying, personnel matter. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
How much time?
Discussion?
Second.
Well, let me, let me vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? One opposed? Abstain? Recuse? The motion passes. How much time do you think we're going to need?
Show.
Let's say 30 minutes. Okay, we'll be back in about 30 minutes, thank you.
Next meeting, all right?
All right, we're still in session. We're going to begin now with our third public forum. We have two resolutions, one on HIV, one on HIV matter and the other personnel. If anyone from the public is interested in speaking on these matters, then come up to the microphone. Okay? Not, I'm going to read the resolution one at a time, and we'll vote. First one, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the suspension with pay of employee number 003977, retroactively upon the commencement of the workday on April 7th, 2016, pending further action of the Board. The superintendent and the business administrator, Board Secretary, are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
Have a vote.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mrs. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
I abstain.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. Second resolution. It is recommended that, following a hearing requested by a parent to review an initial determination by the superintendent of schools pursuant to the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, I'm sorry, of Board of Education, one, affirm the superintendent's initial determination regarding the harassment, intimidation, and bullying complaint involving student number 82816, and two, direct the superintendent to provide a copy of this resolution to the parent. So moved.
Second.
We can vote.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
No.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mrs. Carino.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
And Mr. Rutske.
I abstain.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Next scheduled meeting of our Board of Education is Wednesday, April 27th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. right here in the high school. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And was any opposed? I don't think so. Thank you.
Oh, all opposed.
Thank you. I'll adjourn.
I got you.